We're here for a regularly scheduled school board meeting and the meeting to order and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment is first. If anybody has anything they'd like to chat with us tonight, please step forward. Hearing none. I have one.
Oh, I would like to speak, yeah. Oh, sorry, virtually.
Yeah, go ahead. Just please say who you are and your address, please.
Absolutely, thank you. My name is Bridget Connelly. My address is 24 Dame Road. I am speaking tonight in hopes that the boards will consider postponing their vote on Dr. Given's proposed changes to the school calendar. While I appreciate that the district is looking ahead, I have significant concerns that the community has not had a say in this matter, and that the majority of children enrolled in in-person learning are being denied appropriate access to their education. While Dr. Given posted a town hall on Tuesday evening, it was apparent that she was not looking to engage the community in a dialogue. I hope that you will take the following feedback into consideration in order to make the best decision for the children of Newmarket. Before voting on the calendar changes, please put out a survey to the families of the Newmarket School District that asks about their holiday plans. If only small numbers are traveling outside of New England, the majority should not be forced to lose out on vital in-person instruction. Before voting on the proposed calendar changes, please ask if this is a staffing issue and ask for that data. In Tuesday's town hall, Dr. Given's was not able to give us data around how many staff are traveling outside of New England during the holidays. If there is in fact a staffing issue, before voting on the proposed calendar changes, please consider only transitioning one school to remote learning so that all available resources can be focused on the other school. It is very evident that the school board does not have enough information to make a decision on behalf of the students and families of the Newmarket School District. It is unreasonable and unfair to the children of the Newmarket School District to be denied eight weeks of in-person instruction based on assumptions. It is unreasonable and unfair to the parents of the Newmarket School District to be expected to find childcare or to take time off of work based on assumptions. Please take the time to do this right. The pandemic is not going anywhere anytime soon. We should not default to closing schools at every turn. Our children's education is at stake. Thank you for the time and for hearing me out.
Bridget, thank you very much for your comments, for taking time tonight. Just a couple of notes on that. We will not be voting on it tonight, and a survey will be going out this week, just so folks know that.
So there's a change to the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, so there is not a vote happening tonight?
Nope.
Okay, great to hear that.
Okay, thank you again. Anybody else? I just had, we had one comment that was submitted by email, and I'll read it. It's fairly lengthy, so bear with me. Muriel Colestring wrote to the board yesterday as follows. "Good evening. I would like to address my concerns as a taxpayer and grandparent in regard to Dr. Given's suggestion of switching to remote learning for two weeks after each vacation period. She made a statement that she would be sending out a survey to parents in regard to their travel plan as of this evening." This is last night. It was not been sent. Again, that will be sent shortly. "I would encourage you to look at the data provided by her and listen to community input before you make your decisions in regard to this issue. Although I agree COVID-19 has created many challenges for the community and our nation, and you will not be able to please everyone, I strongly believe switching to remote learning following school vacations is not in the best interest of the children in our community. I would like you to remember the decision that was given to all parents in regard to the school year. You gave parents the opportunity to either learn remotely or in person. At that time and the present, the CDC and various governors were recommending people stay at home and not travel. Parents who were planning on vacationing or traveling for the holidays should have chosen remote learning then, when they had the chance. Considering they were defying recommendations by the experts, the selfish decisions of the few should not impact the majority. Please take into account the single parents who are already working to provide their children, who are unable to take time off work to educate their children. These families and many of those who have two-parent income cannot afford to take time off from work for two weeks, let alone the luxury of traveling or a vacation for their families given the difficult times created by COVID. Should you wish to have all students go remote, please explain how you will ensure that everyone returned home at the end of the school break. If you cannot trust those who are traveling to self-quarantine for two weeks upon their return, how can you trust that they did not extend their trips to avoid traffic or take advantage of a discount airfare? Are you going to check everyone's itinerary to ensure that they are following these rules? If not, the thought behind going remote to accommodate their needs is pointless. I understand the argument of teachers and staff wanting to visit relatives and stay safe in the process. If that is the case, then they would need to quarantine for two weeks prior to seeing their relatives if they are following recommendations. Are you planning on extending this remote period for two weeks prior to each vacation as well? My two children attended Newmarket Schools. My daughter taught at the high school. We understand that teachers, children, and families need and deserve a break, but maybe this is the year people stay home and spend time with their direct family. For those who cannot afford to take a vacation or those who cannot afford to take additional time off, this seems like a punishment for being economically disadvantaged. You have already ended the program, eliminated one of the only affordable childcare options for vacations in the community. Extending the time off one needs to accommodate for remote learning is not an option for a lot of families. Please don't think I am saying that I believe it's the school's job to provide childcare or that it's your responsibility to figure that out for families. I believe your job and responsibility is to ensure that every child within the district is receiving a free and appropriate public education. Going remote does not provide that. You will be leaving behind the most vulnerable, educationally and socio-economically disadvantaged students in the district with this decision. How will you provide educational services to students while they work remote? How are you going to ensure that their educational needs are met within those two-week periods? Are you able to ensure teachers can adequately teach a kindergartner the foundations of reading from home? Please think of the consequences of children missing out on adequate instruction during these times. If the district goes remote following every school vacation, they will be missing over a month of adequate in-person instruction. As I have stated before, I don't believe it's your job to provide childcare or figure out the implications that will create for families. I am simply asking you to consider the challenges going remote for them. I do not believe this decision is an easy one, excuse me, and you will no doubt be upsetting some staff and families. But I encourage you to remember, your job is not to make people happy. Your job is to provide a free and appropriate public education to the children of Newmarket. Going remote following every vacation will not provide the education you are legally obligated to provide. Thank you, Muriel Colestring. That's the only public comment I received or we received as far as I know, Susan. I don't know if you received any others. Thank you, Muriel, for taking the time to provide us your thoughts. It clearly took a while to gather them all, and we appreciate it. Susan, did you have any others?
You're muted.
Oh, I'm muted, sorry. No, I didn't have any other public comments sent to me.
Okay. I got it. Okay. Hearing no other public comments, I just want to remind folks that we're open now. If folks want to come down and provide a comment, if they don't feel comfortable being in person, please send us an email. We had one person obviously join us by phone. That information is on the agenda, so you're welcome to do that by phone as well, if you'd rather do that. Let's go through the reports. We'll go through the student report first. Taylor?
Yeah, so Student Council, National Honor Society, and Interact members will be trick-or-canning tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., so please leave your boxes of canned goods near your mailbox or at the end of your driveway. Newmarket Teen Tutors will be sending out an information letter to parents and their children interested in tutoring services. By the end, hopefully in a week or so, a survey will be sent out as well. If you are taking an AP exam, the deadline to submit payments has been extended to Friday, November 6. Deadlines for seniors to submit their senior and baby pictures to Mr. Anderson is tomorrow, October 30th, so make sure you get those in. Thanks.
Okay. I just had one update from the facilities. I mean, the building project is essentially done. As we last reported, we're working on some commissioning of the systems, of the HVAC system. That stuff, I understand, has been pretty much all worked out now. What our next step will be is just to have a final meeting with the building committee to sort of check off the punch list items. In a few months' time, before the workmanship warranty periods expire, there'll be a walkthrough with the architect and the builder, just to make sure that, you know, what we got is, you know, what we bargained for. And then finally, I think probably within a month or so, we should know the final financials. Remember, we were talking about on the bond amount, having somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 remaining, and we just need to nail down that final figure now that all punch list items have been covered. Are there any other committee reports?
Is that the floor was fixed, the one that was bubbling up?
Yeah, the floor in, just so folks know, there's a section of flooring by the, it's the old gymnasium, but the new cafeteria. It was a tile floor, and it was a brittle material, and there's a wood underlayment, and it was replaced with a rubberized material that should wear better, and similarly in an area on the second floor that was done, so, yep.
Is that on the, I don't know if you guys were wearing the stolen old basketball in my school. I don't know if that's part of the building. It was taken out when they did the road, and I don't know.
Which?
It's at the elementary school.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's been there for a while. I don't know whose responsibility it would be.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Not sure. Can I have the facilities look into that? I don't know if it was for it to go back up or if it's trash. Yeah, I don't know. Anything else? SST, nothing?
Monday.
Monday, you have an SST meeting? Okay. Susan, ready for your report?
Hey, I just have a couple of items I thought were noteworthy for tonight's meeting. One, I want to congratulate the elementary school. They had their SAS testing this week, and so we're looking forward to getting some data about how our students progressed during the pandemic. Of course, you'll remember that the high school had their SAT and PSATs about a week, a little over a week ago, so we'll be getting some data on how they're faring as well. The budget committee met on Monday, and they finalized their budget calendars, so we've taken the dates that we would be meeting with them, and we put them in the budget calendar that will be in your budget proposal. So take a good look at that. You'll see that they followed along with, you know, our outline, so, well, there's nothing surprising there, but I just thought I would let you know that they had finalized that. The town council, my understanding from Steve Forninger, is that the town council will pay for the services facility, MOA, the one that you had approved a couple of weeks ago. It's coming up on their agenda, so hopefully we will get their approval, and then we could move forward with the hiring process for permanent replacement for Greg Marles. And then last, Governor Sununu allocated some of money for schools to backfill the FEMA money that the federal government had informed us several weeks ago that they were no longer going to allow access to it for schools. So he has allocated $200 per student for every school district, and so that is wonderful, wonderful news. Of course, that doesn't have any implications for the FY22 budget, but it will help us offset some costs we've incurred in order to open a school during the pandemic. So that is my report for tonight.
Questions?
Susan, I was wondering how many people are currently quarantining with the students and faculty, staff?
Over 40 went into quarantine around the same time that we went into remote. There's also a few that will overlap as a result of different incidents, and some that obviously were in quarantine prior to that.
Any other questions?
Susan, on the elementary testing, what did you, what was it called, SAS? I couldn't understand what you said.
Yes, that's the state test.
What does it stand for?
That's a good question. Student Assessment, drawing a blank, Amy.
Okay.
I apologize. But yeah, it's for the elementary schools. At the secondary level, it's not just elementary, middle school as well. And ATs and PSATs would be the high school. We took those tests a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully we'll get some data, and we'll be able to see. Now, it's an abbreviated version. It's not the full test that are usually taken, full battery test that are usually taken. It's a version. They were about a half an hour long, and, but it should give us at least a little benchmark for where kids are at this point in time.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so let's move on to discussion items. The first, Amy, did you have something else there?
I just had one thing. It does look, maybe to Gary's point, it does look, all staff that were in isolation and in quarantine have been released. So we, you know, it looks like there's a good likelihood we'll be open school at the junior, senior high school. Of course, if the 40, if there, if anything that percolates up from the 40 or the 35-plus students that are in quarantine, then that may change, but we're still trying to track down the status of those.
So we're not definitive on opening Monday, then?
Not 100%, but I would say it's a good probability. We just haven't finished doing our reviews with the state.
All right, so moving on to discussion items. First item, use of the gym for youth sports, Jay? You can probably come right up there, I think, if that's better.
Thanks for having me. I put together a COVID-19 prepared plan in the hope that we may be able to use the gymnasiums for in-town-only youth sports. Currently, I have a total of 22 school kids, Newmarket school kids, that are interested in playing basketball this season. And I checked with the director of the youth program to find a place for them to play. So what I've done is I've tried to exhaust every option, and the first option I want to start with is, you know, to play in our own facility. And I sent over the plan.
Is this one going to make me sound better?
Of course.
All right, thank you. I sent over the plan. I outlined it. What I basically did was I talked to a lot of districts in the area, I'm sorry, I say rec departments in the area, what they're doing. There are some programs that are allowing their own, participate in their gyms. So I gathered some information from them. I also gathered some information on programs that have been running since COVID started, over in Hampton, Derry, and what they're kind of, what they're seeing, and how they're running those programs, and how they are successful in not seeing any cases, and I basically mirrored that in my program. The only additional thing that I put in that's not in most of them is just the, we will wear masks inside the building at all times. So if you have any questions about the plan I submitted, I'm here to answer them.
Yeah, Jay, I just had a few things to go over. This is mostly for clarification for those in the audience. So what you're thinking, you have 22 kids, and you'd have a three-fourth and a five-six boys team?
Correct.
And there just wasn't enough interest amongst the girls?
No. So I sent out a survey about a month and a half ago. In that survey, I asked a bunch of questions. One of them was, are you interested in playing basketball? The next question was, are you interested in playing basketball if you have to travel to Hampton or Derry? Are you interested in playing basketball indoors? All those questions, and the feedback I got was these. I think I got a total of maybe 56 kids that said they were interested in playing basketball, but we're not going to have the capacity or the ability to run a rec program, meaning we focus on training and development. We can't do that, and also the kindergarten to second grade is really tough to wrangle together when COVID's not happening. So I kind of just eliminated it. So basically, all I lost was the seventh and eighth grade girls, and I think a lot of that is hanging on whether or not they're going to have a basketball season. So I may have opportunity with seventh and eighth grade once it's determined whether they have a season or not. If some girls are interested in playing, boys or girls. What I have done with that is I've reached out to other towns like West River, because I had six girls that wanted to play, and I'd hate to have them not have a place to play, going because we have six girls. So I have some other towns that are interested in taking over, taking some of our girls into their program and play in the leagues that they're playing in, so.
So in terms of this proposal for this odd year that we're all going through, Jay, this would be only Newmarket kids? They'd be in the gym just on Saturday?
Saturday is what I propose, yep.
And then they'd all be wearing masks? Coaches would be wearing masks? No parents would be allowed in the building?
And before, so I haven't, I haven't told the parents that aspect of it?
Uh huh.
Because I wanted to find out if it was going to be approved before I even bring it to them. Yeah, I just did. But I haven't asked them how they feel about that. I mean, as a parent, you may not be comfortable leaving your third and fourth grade boy in a gymnasium, and I get it. So those things could change based on those requirements, but this is just a plan, trying to get that approved.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate, I spread through the community center, and I appreciate the work that you've done in it. I think sort of where, and from my perspective, we're not at a point where we can sort of give you a good answer right now, since as you know, we don't know what's going to happen with basketball for the school. So I would say, and I can always speak for myself, I think we would need to wait a little bit. I would prefer we waited a little bit and allowed Jamie to determine what's happening with the school's sports before making decisions like this.
Yeah, on that.
This isn't, sorry, this isn't like, I'm not saying I need to know now because I want to start my program right now. Most of these, the league that we're going to be playing in is out of Hampton, and that league doesn't start until the end of November. So, I mean, I don't even, I don't even need to really start when that league starts. So I mean, middle of December, even early January is when I'd be looking to utilize that space.
So would you be playing, you'd be playing games outside of the school?
Yes.
Okay. I had another, another point, Tim, when you, oh, and this is, this is maybe for the board's sort of discussion. I think maybe the way to handle, you know, this request, which we very much appreciate along with others, is to bubble it up through the way we did all other, you know, decisions. And I know that, Susan, you can chime in too. I know that we'll be considering soon as a steering committee, again, winter, winter sports and how that, I know that the NHI AA had some changes on that recently, but I think, I think that would be fair, and then have a recommendation, as for any use of our buildings during this time, come up through that process. Does the board agree?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, that's the process, the policy. So I'm confused. There's, it's only going to be Mark kids in the school, but do you mean playing games outside of town? So it's just, just practice, then?
It's not even practice. It's more just, just getting the kids ready to compete. Like I put in there, it's not high-intensity training.
So is that, because I know the CDC talks about various levels of risk with sports, and the highest level obviously would be playing kids from outside your region in full games, and the lowest risk would be in your driveway doing practice by yourself or drills. Kind of where, are they going to be doing drills six feet apart in the school or?
It's almost impossible to monitor six feet apart, in my opinion, in basketball.
So they might be doing drills?
They'll be doing drills, but it'll be small drills, those low-intensity drills, which is what most of the programs that I'm finding, like Nottingham, for instance, is one. They're just doing what they call skills and drills. It's the only thing they're allowing. No play at all, you know, so basically low intensity.
That's the only other thing I'd be concerned about is the use of the front door, but that's a minor concern.
Front door meaning?
Like, it would make sense to have people come in and have less exposure in the building at large, less surfaces potentially having, being touched. So if they came in the back door and went into the gym.
We've always used the back door for the gym.
Oh, okay, it said front door, but.
We always use the back door, and we use the gym entrance for the elementary school in past years.
Gotcha.
Yeah, both, both gyms have sort of that, that type of access. And any other questions from folks? Jay, when ideally would you, I mean, the sooner the better, but when sort of your, like, last date you kind of need an answer?
I mean, end of November. I mean, I'd like it, like to know sooner for planning purposes, but I think that that's a logical and realistic time.
Okay.
So does he need to submit anything official, or is that?
Normally, I would submit a building use form.
I mean, I think we have these building use forms, but that's when there are other programs competing for the space, but there's nobody in it now, so I'm not sure that that's, I mean, ultimately, we would for the insurance and all the formality, but let's, let's decide if they, if we're even comfortable, you know, for us. But, but let's, let's decide if they, if we're even comfortable, you know, for us, as, as a building and then us having this go forward. And then that's just a form that can be submitted later, I think.
Hey, Jay, a question. On, how long is the program do you anticipate being?
The season is, the season that we're in is going to, is called the winter season, so it'll probably go till end, middle of February. And that's all contingent of when it starts.
Okay.
These, these out-of-town, these, these, these facilities that are having these programs, they're just following the CDC guidelines. There's really no dates that they have to follow as far as when they can play and when they can't. So I think they're going to start probably middle of November and then go into, probably into February.
Jay, do you have a sense for the other teams what the mask requirements are?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you have a sense for the other teams that they'll be playing, what, what the mask requirements are?
They will not be wearing masks. No, they wouldn't. The, the facility that we're, we're going to be playing is the room in Hampton, and they do not require, they follow the CDC guidelines. They don't require their masks to be worn.
Anything else? Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
We do require masks, so would you mind if you could put your mask on? We'd appreciate it. Everybody would. Thank you. All right, so the next thing is the budget presentation.
I'm going to present, I'm hoping that you'll be able to see my screen. If you can't, then just give a shout. So I, I can't see you at all, so if somebody can just let me know whether you can see.
We're just seeing a reflection of your screen, so right now, we're looking at us.
Okay.
So you have to hit your docs.
Okay. Let's try it again.
Luca, thank you for explaining that. I was not quite sure what I was seeing. Like, how did anyone?
This is what I look at all day. Little shiny faces.
Hey, Mike, can I just ask, did we receive anything, any materials for this? Because I, I didn't get any. Patty was.
Yeah, we, we, Patty just dropped them off like five minutes ago.
Oh, okay, because I didn't, I obviously, I couldn't get it, so, all right.
Yeah, and, and I'm not going through the budget document tonight. What you have is a draft, because I want to have the opportunity tomorrow with fresh eyes to be able to read the entire document through to make sure everything ties out and there are no typos or anything like that. So tonight, we do have a copy of a draft for you. And then if, if everything looks fine tomorrow, I'll let you know. And then we'll produce the rest of the budget books and get it up online. We're working on it all the way up until five minutes of five, so, and I have not, I have not had a chance to read the whole thing through one final time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But I'm having. Do not want to share.
If it helps, Susan, we've had issues all day.
Yeah, it's just, it won't allow it.
In my case, I would limit it to the day.
I'm going to try one more thing, and if that doesn't work, then I'll just do it for the day. I thought I was being slick by doing it this way.
I just, well, everybody where we're waiting, I just noticed, I think we have on our calendar here, it's in, it's in the tab. Our, our next meeting will be on November fifth.
The, the calendar's in the pen that's A here, in the book, in the notebook.
And, and we'll get that out, and I, I didn't know I might want to meet maybe the same time. Does that make sense? Five o'clock?
Yes. It does.
Anyone see my screen?
Sort of.
It's black.
Let me try one more thing. Number five hundred. How about now?
Nothing yet, Susan, nope.
Okay, well, with that, I hope this would.
We, we can follow along, I suppose. Amy, I'm sorry, you don't have yours, but.
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to be referring to anything specific in that. I guess I'm going to do an overview, as I did last year. So I guess just sit back and relax, and, and I'll just walk you through it. Some of the highlights. So for the FY twenty-two budget, we had two priorities administratively. One was to sustain or advance existing school improvement efforts. And the other was to attend to some of the simple needs that if we did not address, would have a negative impact on student growth and development. So those were the two kind of priorities that we set for ourselves. We felt that it was important to identify where we know that we have some challenges and bring it to your attention. So in terms of enrollment, overall, based on the projections that we've made, we're looking at a slight decrease in overall enrollment. I'm not sure if that is going to hold true, because I suspect that we may get more folks, folks moving in. We have children who would like to have their kids on campus, which is something we offer, and most communities are not. And also because our building projects are, are complete, and that often attracts families to a community. So, but I can't capture that in any kind of projection. We were really surprised this year when we got our October one enrollment information to see that we had so few kindergartners. I think this year's kindergarten is sixty-three, and in the last number of years, it's been more like seventy-five. So next year, we're anticipating that our kindergarten will come, come back to, to be in the seventies. But that also links for a first grade that's small. So one of the things that is included in this budget is, is that we're transferring or shifting one first grade teacher to the elementary level, or to the kindergarten level. It happens to be the same teacher that was a kindergarten teacher last year that we shifted up to the first grade, because the class sizes were big, they were, so he was an experienced lower elementary school teacher. So overall, the largest class that we have is in the fourth grade. Next year, there's, we're anticipating eighty-eight students. So that would be the biggest class pre-K through twelve. We currently have four teachers in the fourth grade, and we would be looking to add a teacher to keep those class sizes down. Overall, our goal is to keep the class sizes as low as possible for next year, because there is what we're calling, or is being termed, the COVID supply as a result of kids being out at the end of last year and most students in the state not being on campus learning. Schools all, all over the state have had to, you know, really focus their attention on power standards. But that also means that there's some, some skills that you can't focus as much attention on in school. Our class size is low at the elementary schools, so that instruction can be a little bit more personalized. The larger the class, the more challenging personalizing learning can be. So the idea here is that we would try to keep our class sizes low. On average, at the elementary school, class sizes would average across all grades to be about fifteen, if this budget proposal is approved. Of course, there's a range in that, some being higher than that. Generally speaking, you'd want to keep them even smaller at the lower elementary school level. And then maybe up to twenty or the low twenties max at the, at the upper elementary school level. So at the middle school, we're looking at pretty stable enrollment there. You know, some, some classes will be a little higher and some a little lower. Overall, about the same. The middle school, eighth grade, is a little bit smaller than the graduating high school class. And so therefore, we will see at the high school level that we are looking at eleven fewer students at, at the high school. So those are the, you know, you know, talking points on enrollment. And you'll see all of that information in your, in your proposal. Staffing, additions would include three new FTEs. Overall, we have just the header under two-hundred-and-twenty staff, proposed new public, pre-dawn new. Eighty-nine percent of the staffing report to building level. And this increase in staffing represents one-point-four percent over the current year. The cost in half of those three is two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. That's now ringed out. So in terms of instructional improvements, as I said, we want to keep the class sizes low, lower than we typically would at the elementary schools, but still within the range. So we would, we would be requesting the addition of one FTE to the fourth grade. We would like to add a half-time art teacher at the high school, so that we can keep a full-time art teacher at the middle school. Right now, there's two people that split between the buildings. One is a half-time art teacher, and the other is the industrial arts teacher who also does teach some art classes. We would like to be able to have the industrial arts teacher be able to teach full-time at the high school. So the FTE shows up at the high school, though the person is currently half at, at the middle school, and half at the high school. Another addition that we're requesting is an educational technology integrator. The tech department had requested another FTE to support all of the technologies that we are currently both supporting and expanding in our use. A portion of the calls that they receive really are geared towards, you know, how to use and leverage technology and tools in the classroom, and that is not the area of expertise of the staff that we have on hand. So this, this position would really be teacher-facing in many ways, because it would be a person that could help our teachers to advance their skills, integrating technology into the curriculum, take that layer of pressure off of our technology team. There is a little bit of money we're asking for to expand the summer help. Right now, we have eight weeks of summer help. We want to expand that to twelve weeks. You know, we have many more devices now that we've, it's gone one-to-one. The tech department was feeling, which is typical with all tech departments, when you open school, opening schools as we before is really a three-week process. And so getting all the kinks worked out of everything requires all hands on deck and then some at the beginning of the year. So Jason, our IT director, would like to have the summer person be able to stay on until the end of September to help them get a, a school opening hump. And then we're also asking for some instructional resources. A good chunk of them are for software. During this pandemic, as we've moved to remote learning, teachers have started to develop and incorporate some of these technology tools into their curriculum. And we're finding that from tools, if we, if we pay the licensing fee for, we, we get a lot more. There's many more advantages to using that tool. The three versions don't always give you the level of functionality that we would like. So at all three levels, at the elementary, at the junior, and the senior high, we have tools that, that our educators are requesting that we purchase, that they can continue to use those even when we become, you know, all on campus in future. Also, I think it's not really necessarily a new request. What happened when we were going through and tying up the budget is that we learned historically, and that's something I think you'll enjoy about this budget, is that there's actually some historical information to help ground requests. So you have three years worth of actual spending, the current year's budget that was adopted and approved, and the budget that we're proposing. As we were looking through some of these various, in some of these various areas, we, we learned that there was a typo at the elementary school. And instead of having library media resources funded at eight, this year, it was entered at eight hundred. And so the, the book, the addition of the books is really just restoring the library books at the elementary school that have historically been in, in place. But as I said, as a result of the typo in the current year, this would be asking for funding for that. And then also supplies, another thing that we noticed when we were looking at the SAU supplies and some of the other supply lines is that now that we have this historical data, we can see where we've spent money, how much we've spent in the past. Not how much was budgeted, but in fact, how much we're, we're expending for, for supplies and materials. And that line, in some cases, has been underfunded. So it's to bring the budget amounts up to what, what our spending has been before. So that, that really represents kind of in a quick nutshell, the instructional improvements and additions in the current budget proposal. So for operational improvements, there's money set aside in the current year for certain infrastructure improvements. Some are facility-related and some are IT-related in this current budget. So it's, they're, they're part of the replacement cycle, so it's not that they're new, but they are going to be improvements that are, that are targeted for the upcoming year. And so one of those is Wi-Fi at the elementary school. So in the current year budget, the junior, senior high school, we see their Wi-Fi upgrade. These were not done during the building project, because I, I believe because they were built in as part of the base of our budget. And so next year, it will be elementary school, and then the year after that, the SAU will get their Wi-Fi upgraded. In addition, there, there are portions of the buildings that did not get updated. And one of those is twelve elementary school classrooms. And that is, you know, noted in our CIP report that we shared with the town and shared with you about a month or so ago. Oh, maybe, actually, two months ago, I would say, the beginning of September. And so we have money in the budget to. And so we have money in the budget to replace carpet in six of the twelve elementary school classrooms. Instead of going with carpet, they're really, really in terrible shape, too, I have to say. I was in there recently and they, you know, they're all wavy, matted, torn. It's just, they're red bears. So replacing them will be a significant improvement from what's there now. But anyways, we want to go from carpet to tile. Tile is in all the other classrooms. And this will help us to be able to move forward with removing carpet and having tile in all the classrooms. And then in both schools, adding, replacing, I should say, some equipment, presentation equipment. So at the junior, senior high school, there was a presentation system that was in the cafeteria that I guess was moved over to the library media center. But with all of the equipment and everything in the cafeteria and the sound system and everything else, you know, in this current budget, we would be replacing the presentation system. Not the, not the, not for theater, but it's a big drop-down screen where you can, you know, now what we have to do is bring up a little more in the quality in the presentation system. It's just not what they would be if we had a, if we had a real professional system. And then also at the elementary school and the library. So both schools would have the ability to have professional development. You could have staff meetings, you could look at data. The community would be able to use it if we wanted to have a movie night or something like that in the cafeteria. And we'd actually have the ability to do something like that at some point in the future when we can open back up fully. And then the last item for operational improvements, and these are just the highlights. There's little things here and there. And you'll read through all the narratives that the administrators have put in. I'm just trying to hit on the high spot. Jason also put in to replace all of the administrative handsets. I guess we have the old ones and, you know, they're due to be replaced in this next upcoming budget cycle. So that would be all administrative phones at the SAU and at the two schools. The phones that are in the classroom are new as part of the building project, but apparently the admin phones were not replaced. So those were some of the operational improvements. Also, just want to make a note that there's a couple of things that may make some of the numbers look funny. So I just want to call them out when you're looking at them. So one of the things we noticed is that the athletic director, a hundred percent of his salary was recorded in PE, though he is point six PE and point four athletic director. So in this budget, we had moved point four of his salary in his FTE into the athletic department and left the point four in the PE department. So we point that out in the budget document. We just wanted you to know that in advance. Also, and a lot of these are just cleanup things, you know. Last year, we tried to do some cleanup. This year, we're trying to do some more cleanup of our current accounts. And Jana noticed when she was going through that all of our facility items, everything was being reported in maintenance and repair, even if it was inspections and those things that aren't really maintenance, would be categorized as maintenance and repair. So she added a professional services line for this year. And so costs are split. So what you'll see when you're looking through the cost centers is when you get to most all of them and you'll see a maintenance and repair line, you'll see that those numbers are gone down. And then if you look above it, you'll see a professional services line and you'll see an amount go up. And it doesn't mean that we have had no cost increases in maintenance and repair and professional services. It just means the lion's share of that shift is just trying to properly budget for and then record inspection services and other services that are not considered maintenance and repair. So I just wanted to point those out so that, you know, when you look at that and you see, hey, that looks kind of funny, you'll know in advance about the two shifts and how we're reporting those. And then last, the never least, is the costs. So the FY twenty-two educational plan that's being proposed in total is twenty-four million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty. Now, that includes all debt service and it includes grants. In Hampshire, you're required, when you approve the budget at the town meeting, that you approve an amount for grants and food service and other things. So all of those pieces up, it totals twenty-four million, four hundred and twenty-one, six sixty. And so this represents a five point two percent increase over the current year. Three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, or twenty-eight percent of the increase, is for improvements, the ones that I had mentioned here tonight. And eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight, or seventy-two percent is for level service budget. So in other words, our breathing costs, the cost of just opening schools next year with the same programming that we have in place and all of the obligations that we have, with special education, regular education, you know, the English language learners, all in, is seventy-two percent of the increase. So that is the really high level, highlights of our FY twenty-two budget proposal. Again, you have a draft of the proposal. And we are going to review it one more time to make sure, again, there's no typos or anything. I don't want to put anything out in public until we've had the opportunity to really read it, scrub it one more time. If it's fine, you know, I'll let you know. And if we need to make a change, then we'll get those changes reprinted and sent to you and then put the document up on the website.
Thank you, Susan. Just a couple of things procedurally. I just, as we were talking, when you were trying to present your screen, that our next, our budget, first budget workshop will be on November fifth and scheduled for 5:00 PM. It'll be here at the town hall. So we'll be, that'll be sort of the board's, you know, opportunity, having, you know, a week with the materials to go through it and ask questions. One thing that's worked well in the past for us, I think, is for folks, to the extent, this last couple of weeks has been crazy busy for me personally, so I wouldn't have been able to. But if you go through this and you find questions, you come up with your list and just maybe send them to Susan and copy, maybe copy Jana on them, too. Sometimes it's easier if they have your questions in advance. Makes the meeting go along quicker. And it doesn't mean we can't ask new questions at the meeting itself, but I certainly appreciate it when I get questions in advance. So if we could endeavor to do that, best-laid plans, we'll see how the week goes. But try to personally look through this and get my questions in. And stuff will come up as we're talking about it, too. So it's not the, it's not the last opportunity. It's not our last meeting, if you look at the schedule on that. So, you know, we have an additional workshop on the twelfth. And then our goal, according to the, Amy, you can't see this, but in Appendix A, there's a, that budget calendar that we had, you know, given to us a few weeks ago at a meeting.
Yep.
We target in the nineteenth to adopt that, so.
Okay.
And I will have, we'll divide the night up so that we have, you know, maybe the principals one night on the fifth and then on the twelfth, so we can take a deeper dive so we really are able to get any questions answered. So maybe if you could just focus on doing intro and the building budgets for the fifth, that's next Thursday, and then the remainder of the budget, which is kind of SAU and district-wide for the twelfth. And then we can have, you know, time on the twelfth to certainly deliberate and, you know, get a better sense of, you know, what you would like to do in terms of ultimately some form of approval of the budget.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions about the budget as far as for tonight? Nothing? Okay. All right, well, let's move on. As I mentioned to folks earlier today, we're going to, with your pleasure, postpone the school board goals because I'm still typing them out. So if we could do that, maybe put that on the agenda for next meeting. And I'll get, try to get those out in advance so people can think about them. And I'll also remind myself to pass around, Amy put together some goals as well shortly before our last meeting that I hadn't yet sent everybody else in those as well. So the calendar revisions, okay. As I mentioned, we're going to defer decision on that, vote on that tonight. So, you know, Susan's going to, as she mentioned at the town hall the other day, I think it was a Tuesday, to, you know, she's going to issue a survey. We'll get the response back from that. If we receive any additional input from community members, we can consider that as well. And we like to hear from people. I thought, I didn't attend the whole thing. I had another engagement on Tuesday night. But always good in those town halls to hear what other people are thinking because you see angles that you didn't think of. And I think that's a great way to do things, not only for, you know, stuff we're dealing with during COVID, but it may be a way to get real-time communication going forward on other important issues. It's really, it's really great because you get all the people in the room, all the experts, and they can answer real time. And it's something we really can't do here in public comment during our meetings. So I think we were on to something there.
And like, could I just interrupt? I just had a question for Susan. It's in regards to the revisions. I was wondering about the Department of Education and the instructional hours that they require each year. And I was just wondering, is, how is that going to affect hours for the year? And if so, are we going to have to have a waiver to meet that or?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Is my mic up? Very good. It will have no impact at all. Whether you're teaching remotely or teaching on campus, the instructional hours are considered the same.
Right, I understand that. But I meant, just like where we've lost some, you know, with closing the school down to the exposures, starting later, having less hours in the day. So I was just wondering if that was going to impact it at all.
I'm hopeful it won't. One of the ways that, first of all, the number of days that we are in session is more than the state requires. And if you calculate by hours, we are offering, I think when Sean calculated it last year, it was well over two weeks more of instruction than if you calculated by the hour. So we are not in risk in any way of not meeting the state requirements for instructional time. We're way, we offer way beyond what is required now. So we might have to look at the, I mean, who knows what's going to happen, right? I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't have a magic crystal ball, so I certainly don't know. But it's not something that I'm more concerned about right now.
Okay.
And certainly with the calendar changes that we have here, there's nothing in this that we're proposing that would change anything from our original account. In other words, I'm not asking or even suggesting that we do fewer instructional days.
Can the board get a copy of that proposal, at least as it was presented the other night? Well, did everyone else get one? I didn't get one.
No.
And I didn't get a chance to actually watch the video, so I didn't see it.
Yes, and I'm happy to bring it up and walk through with you because I know not all board members were on. And the reason why it's not published is because it's not, it's not done, contrary to what, you know, a few people have stated. You know, this is, this is not a done deal in any way, shape, or form. It's something that throughout the state educators are talking about as a way to provide some structure for timeframes that we know are typically high absentee periods. Travel is one thing, but as we talked about frequently over the summer, we have flu season upon us. And so we have been saying, you know, during flu season, it may absenteeism might get so, rise so significantly that we may have to shift to remote. So that whole idea is nothing new. Is saying, okay, well, with what we've learned over the course of the first two months of opening school, in addition to what we know flu season's like, it might be more advantageous to have a structured, planned, two-week remote session during the timeframes that flu season is highest. And the thought process, and it's not mine, I'm not making this up. I mean, the conversation in the industry is more centered around the idea that, you know, if you go remote, then kids are not in, and staff are not in an environment where germs are being potentially shared. That if after a break, if we took a two-week period and went remote, that anyone that had a cough or a cold or the flu, they would be at home. They would still continue to be learning. And, you know, the sickness would not be spread throughout the school. And that would give us a better chance of staying open longer. If you remember in the summer, there was, you know, we were wondering, geez, are we going to even be able to stay open for two months, you know? Hoping if we could just make it, you know, at least administratively, we were like, please, it would be so wonderful if we could try to make it to Thanksgiving without having to go remote. So this idea that we would be in session all year without interruption, I'm just not exactly clear where that's coming from. This idea is really, how can we keep our schools open? What is the best chance of being in session longest? And travel quarantine, of course, is a piece of that, but the bigger piece is really the flu. And, you know, I did share that. I shared the data on that for what flu season looked like and what attendance, what happens with your attendance during that time. Folks seem to really be focusing on this element of travel. The bigger issue really is flu season. So with that in mind, I think I figured out how to share this. And, no, did I, oh, maybe I can. So I'm going to bring up that calendar that, it's a draft. It's not, you know, it's not in cement. It's none of that. Can you see it at all?
Nope.
No. Susan, when you say that you talk, called the Northeasters, whatever it's called, when you meet with all the other superintendents, this is a conversation that's happening through all schools, but you're just bringing it to the forefront so there's not a, hey, surprise. I mean, that's what I'm gathering.
Yeah, I mean, as I've said all along, Elizabeth, the likelihood that we'll have to shift to remote during flu season is pretty high. I've said that all along. That shouldn't be a surprise. I thought, and this was not my idea, I have to say, you know, I heard it in my superintendent roundtable meeting, and I thought it had merit and it was worth bringing forward for conversation. Obviously, as a parent myself, I, if I know that there's a pretty good likelihood I'm going to have to pivot, I'd rather have as much advanced notice as possible. That's why, you know, even if it was a snow day, not that we're going to have those anymore, but because in this proposal here, we would be eliminating snow days for the year and just shifting to remote. But the idea is to give people some pred- But the idea is to give people some predictability at times that we know what attendance has historically looked like. But, you know, again, if, if folks want us to roll the dice, if that's the conventional wisdom and the wish of the community, hey, I'm, I'm happy. I just thought that people would want, you know, maybe a little bit, especially in these uncertain times when things are just so crazy anyways, you know, it's gotta be disheartening to get a phone call on a Sunday to hear that, you know, you've gotta pivot to remote on a Monday. It's, it's disheartening for, for teachers to, you know, have geared up for instruction, to be live, and then find out, you know, nope, for the next couple of weeks, you're in fact going to be teaching remotely. They're two different preparation models. So anyways, that's, that, and I apologize. I don't know why I'm having such difficulty tonight, not able to share. It's saying on my side that it's sharing, but on your side it's not. So I, I can't just, just tell you that, so, so the basic idea is that we would, we would be eliminating, and this is, was on the original calendar. So just to take a walk back, and I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but let me just remind everybody. Our calendar is required to be approved by the board. The calendar was brought forward and approved, I believe it was back in March. Now, this was before any of this pandemic and school reopening plans and all of that. So our calendar, right now as it stands, has had a couple of minor modifications to the start of school. Then we went to this four-one model where planning would happen on Fridays. And during the teacher day, they wouldn't be able to do any planning, which is required by their, you know, their CBA. And so when we put the original budget or the original calendar together, our professional development day is when we do all of our curriculum work and have time to engage on a district-wide level, those were, those now land on Fridays. And so, but Fridays are planning days. So we can't do planning days and get ready for teaching kids on a Monday in the following week if we're doing the PD. So this calendar eliminates the half days and it eliminates PD days on Friday. And then it also just marks the potential times when we would be going into remote learning during the year. Again, as you all know, it is my strong preference that students learn in our schools. But we can't continue to offer that if we don't have adequate staffing in order to do that and/or we don't have sufficient number of students in things to be able to teach.
Susan, Susan, can I, can I?
Concept.
Can I just, one, one point going back to what you said earlier that I just, I just really wanna emphasize is that this is a, this whole discussion about this is sort of pre-planning. It's trying to look ahead and being proactive rather than reactive. So I think folks need to understand that as well. It's not anything that's definite yet, and we're just here talking about it. It's a big change. We wanted to get it on people's radar. That's why, you know, we had the town hall, you know, so people could offer input. We're, we'd welcome any more input from anybody as well. And, you know, definitely through the survey, but I mean, it's, this is uncharted territory. And you can't get caught not looking ahead and, you know, trying to plan. And you, you, you don't have a crystal ball. You don't know what this is gonna, could we get lucky and, and make it through and, and have all the in-person, you know, right through the year? Maybe. But maybe not. So this is, we're just sort of planning for potential eventualities and no decisions are being made here tonight. And I would remind folks again, you can go back to the, our October 15th meeting and Dr. Givens gave a rundown of sort of the status of staffing. What's really struck up, stuck out to me is staffing at the junior senior high. We have substitutes, if, if I'm correct in hearing that from the last meeting. And despite our best efforts to try to recruit and hire them in, in, in other monitoring positions and, so we're operating on thin staffing despite best efforts to get people hired. And if you lose, you know, even a few of those folks or, you know, any critical people, you have no choice but to, you know, go remote. So, so folks ought to keep that in mind. This is, and we've said it from day one, that this, you know, we're fortunate to be able to offer, you know, in-person learning as, as long as we have, but it's, it's, it's fragile.
Susan, I sent, I sent you some documents earlier, actually, that I just recently found out that apparently school employees now are considered, or at least according to this article or this, this site from the DHHS, are considered essential employees that can actually test out of quarantining. So that may be something worth investigating. It may be able to limit the number of closures.
Perhaps. I, I.
It was just a few hours ago. So you probably haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Susan.
Susan, may I ask a question about the hiring of substitutes?
Sure.
I, have you, are we hiring substitutes or just monitors or both? Because?
I'm advertising for custodians, food service, monitored paraprofessionals, and substitutes.
Okay. Along with the majority of the, the rest of the school districts as well, Amy. There's no, none of us have enough staff at this point. Right. I know. I, I wasn't sure because I actually have never seen the page where the hiring is. So I didn't know. I just thought, last time we spoke, we were looking for monitors and paras and custodians and food service, but I didn't, I never heard the word substitute come up. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah. I think, I think because generally speaking, I'm mentioning those positions because they're not, don't require certification. So I was kind of going to the community or anybody locally that might be listening to help us out. So substitutes do have to have teaching credentials. And, and our, our plan was, which has not panned out, but the plan was, we were hoping to hire three permanent subs so that we would have them here and we would, you know, they wouldn't be available in the pool that might be going to other schools. Typically subs, sometimes they're just specific to your school. Sometimes you'll get a retiree or two that, that only wanna work in your school, but, but sometimes you, you have the other scenario, which is that they're substituting here and Wednesday and Thursday in Exeter and Friday they're, they're over in Portsmouth, you know? So trying to pick up some teaching time to bolster their resume. So we just have had no luck at all. We tried everything. At the junior senior high school last year, we had three, three substitutes that were retirees, but all of them are, you know, at those high-risk ages and did not feel comfortable returning. So what we had available evaporated. And so, you know, we're just kind of stuck in this difficult situation where every day it's a challenge to keep our schools open. But I will say, you know, as, as much as folks might not realize that, that the teachers, the professional staff, the, the administration in particular is doing everything they can to keep our schools open. I have, we have SAU people go down and cover classes at the junior senior high school because we're so short-staffed and we don't wanna close, you know? And so, but there's things that are beyond our control. And it would be irresponsible of me to not bring it to your attention when we get into these situations. You know, a challenge. It would, it would just, you know, would not be the right thing for me to do to not, to not share that with the community, not share it with the board. And so, like I said, I, I don't have any, there's no pressure, you know, personally to, to move this forward. I think, you know, there were some great ideas that were shared at the town hall. There were some great ideas shared by, by the staff when we had our town hall meeting last Friday. And based on that, we, we made some tweaks. And I, I'd like to have the opportunity, and the reason why I said to Mike, I don't think we ought to vote on it tonight, is because the community asked if we could send a survey out, and I said I would. Of course, I've had to work on the budget the last couple of days. So that'll go out tomorrow. And the other thing is that one of the members in, at the town hall meeting had, had suggested maybe rethinking those professional development days and moving those into remote learning timeframes instead of on campus. And I thought that was a great idea. But I, you know, I wanna be able to talk that through. So believe me, I listen. Maybe I don't always, aren't always able to give people the answer they're hoping for, but I think they're important. And I wanna explore that one further and get the survey out. And then we can bring this back up next week.
Susan, there was another thing I found just before this meeting. I need to forward it to you, but basically it's a Department of Education advisory for remote instruction. And it talks about shortened school days. And it seems to stipulate that shortened, shortened school days do not count unless they are truly an emergency and short-term and unanticipated. So I'm just curious if we're positive that our shift to remote are gonna be counted towards that, towards?
In my conversation with the commissioner, we're, we're fine. So I, I don't know what other higher level of confidence I could get from the state.
That would be the top.
Yep. So I reviewed with them our, our plan. I reviewed it back in the summer. He's actually been quite responsive when I, when I reached out to contact him to get clarifications. They did just put out a new advisory. I have not had the chance to write it. As I said, I've, I've really been trying to focus on getting our budget done and in your hands and.
Yeah, this one's October 21st. So you made us, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I'll, I'll review on the information you sent. And I know I have emails that are piling up a little bit. And I will simply get this budget reviewed tomorrow. Then I will shift gears again, get that survey out and try to catch up on a few other things that I have been able to keep up on.
Susan, it's Amy again. I'm sorry to bother you about this again. But on the substitutes, did you, you said that they need credentials? I just wanted to clarify that.
Ours, they have to be qualified.
And what does that entail? Like, do the, a certification from a program or?
Yeah. So what we're trying to do is hire permanent subs. They have to have a teacher's license. They have to be certified to teach in one of the content areas. So what we're looking for is to find somebody that had an elementary school certificate and somebody that had a middle school or, or, or some secondary disciplinary. That was what our hope was, but just not, they're not there.
So would we hire subs without the certification? I mean.
Well, what we, what we've had to do, like, we've hired monitors or paraprofessionals. And paraprofessionals can for a brief period of time. In fact, it's in the paraprofessional contract that we, we pay them a little higher if there's a short-term need for them to substitute. But that, that doesn't address long-term needs. And that's really where the challenge is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Susan, it, just, just that, maybe the distinction, I don't know, Amy, if, if this was part of your question, but the three permanent ones, full-time, that you were trying, you're, you're still trying to hire, you're, you're looking for them to have a certification in a, in a, in a, in a subject area. But, but as, you know, as laypeople, what we traditionally think as a substitute teacher, the person who may come in, you know, once or twice or three times a month, those folks don't necessarily have to have a, a certification, right?
Ours, I, I believe ours do. But I can see if that's just the luck of the draw or it's a state requirement.
Yeah. I'm just sort of thinking back to my, you know, 35-plus years ago when I was at school. I, I don't, we had a lot of interesting subs, but I'm not sure that they were certified. They were interesting people.
Well, I'll have to say they were.
Yeah. Probably not. Maybe that's why I changed. Maybe times have changed.
School, Susan. You know, when my, my kids were younger and I, I don't remember, you know, I don't have a certification. So, and I know many of the subs didn't have certifications either. So I just, I found, I found it odd because I don't recall that ever being for our subs.
You know, again, there's two different things. There's short-term subs and there's long subs.
Right.
Yeah. And a long-term sub is teaching.
Right.
Yeah. And that's really what we're looking for because as people, as you know, if they quarantine for two weeks, and sometimes it's longer. And this is all learning for me. I mean, who, who would ever think that you would have to be in this kind of a situation? But, you know, if somebody comes down with COVID, they have a 10-day isolation period, which is different than quarantine. And then the people in their household that are in, that, that are in proximity to them then are required to start their quarantine on the last day of their isolation. But while that person's in isolation, they're also quarantined. So people can be out for three or four weeks. We've had students that have been out, you know, for 30 days already.
Right.
And, and so the idea that we can, and so what that means from a teaching perspective is that a teacher, especially at, at any level, right, is still teaching their on-campus classroom, but they have to prepare almost a personalized learning experience for the kids in quarantine. So the more kids you have in quarantine, the more disruptive it is for everyone in the classroom because the teacher is, can only divide themselves into so many different ways, right? They can only plan for so many different scenarios simultaneously. So the more we have in quarantine, the more challenging it becomes for teachers. It's hard. And, and then in addition, at the junior senior high school, or at the high school in particular, teachers typically teach six classes. They teach three on red and three on black. 23 of our high school teachers are teaching seven or eight sections right now. And so they're, they're teaching even more than they normally would. And then on top of that, they've got kids in quarantine. So this is incredibly challenging, which, you know, we totally understand standing here today why probably more experienced people made the decision to go remote because it's, it's really, really demanding and challenging. And I don't want our teachers to burn out. I mean, this is hard work that we're doing right now. And, and so, you know, but we do it because we want kids in school. And, and so we will do everything we can. But this is, this is, this is, this is difficult. You can't put somebody that knows nothing about teaching and learning in a classroom and expect kids to have good learning experiences, you know? I think everybody has learned from this pandemic that there's much more to teaching than people realize. And so, you know, what we wanna do is do our best by our kids. And certainly if we, if we need to put a paraprofessional in to cover somebody, you know, just in terms of, of, of kind of overseeing a class, but overseeing a class is not teaching. And so, so like I said, even if it was just short-term subs that had no credentials, we can't find them anyway because we can't find paras and we can't, we can't get enough monitors either.
Right.
Yeah. It's tough.
Susan, we interrupted your thunder. I don't know if you had more you wanted to say on, on the, on the calendar considerations?
No. I think if nobody else has questions, I just wanted to be able to review with you kind of the thinking. You know, it's not narrowed by this idea of quarantining. It's, it's more a function. It's really challenging, as I've said, to be able to determine what's COVID and what's flu since all but one symptom are identical.
That, yeah, I'm sorry. That's, that's, I wanted to go back to that point if I could, Susan. Explain again the significance of flu and how it factors into all of this.
Yeah. So if, if you are online, you can, if you go to our website, I'll, I'll tell you, so you can look at the graph yourself. I shared this with parents the other night and I'm just so disappointed that I can't share my screen with you tonight. But if you go to our website, and I know most of you do probably have your, a device, and you go to school board, or actually, if you go to the front page, you can just hit the button that says school operations and COVID. And you go to our reopening plan. If, if you see to the left of the reopening plan, that first document, it says printable version. If you click on that button, it brings the whole document up as opposed to seeing it through that. through that little window. And if you turn to page, or scroll, I should say, you don't turn online, but if you scroll down. You scroll down to page four. A chart that shows you flu activity during what months. And you can see that in December, right after Thanksgiving, okay, there's a huge influx of flu cases. And, you know, this isn't a one-year study. This is from data collected from 1982 through 2018. So this is, this is the pattern. In December, we'll, we'll get an influx of people that are sick from the flu. In January, we'll have another one as people come back from the holidays. And then after February, around February vacation, you get slammed. And so the idea of, of going to remote is, is to say, flu season's coming, we have no substitutes, we have no capacity whatsoever to continue with on-campus learning. And so if, if we have, you know, several absences, which is very likely and typical, not because of any, out of anybody's, you know, ill will, but because that's, that's the way the flu seasons cycle. So as you can see, if you're looking at it, those are the months that are most significantly impacted. So the thinking, and again, this wasn't the harebrained idea I came up with, it was, I thought it was a rather interesting argument made by another superintendent, that if you're on-campus learning and you could do those two weeks, that it would probably have a positive impact on your ability to stay open longer, because kids wouldn't be in session directly after a recess when you can see, you know, flu season is increasingly active. So, you know, again, I, I think the logic in it makes a lot of sense, but that doesn't mean that's the right thing for us to do or what this community wants. I think it's worth sharing and having a conversation about. So I don't know if anybody got to see that. I hope, I hope you were able to look at that.
Yeah, we're looking at it, Susan. We see that, that chart. Is it, is it, do, do, do experts, I mean, that's based on past pre-COVID data, experts maybe predict similar, a similar curve, but may reduce cases because of all the handwashing and masks and all that?
How do we have? No idea, you know? I, I think overlaid are the two layers of this, right? What are the positive impacts of levels that we have on the flu, on the transmission of flu? It seems to me, at least logically, that it would have a positive impact on, on, on this trend, but also overlaid on top of this is the pandemic, you know? So who knows what numbers might look like now or, or what, what will have a greater impact in this upcoming winter season? I mean, we know what the impact of COVID is right now. It's, it's rising. It's rising all around us, you know? Massachusetts was made a red state amongst, you know, and a couple of our New England states declared Massachusetts red. Our numbers are getting more and more to those levels that we may become a red state soon. So, you know, I, I don't know where it's all going, Mike, but I guess we'll find out together.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? And, you know, again, we'll, we'll get the survey data, come back, and we'll see if we're ready to, to make a decision on the 10th, and if we're not, then we'll proceed accordingly. Any other thoughts for right now?
Did you say the 10th?
I'm sorry, the 5th.
Oh.
5th, sorry. Thanks, Gary. Getting late. Okay. Next up on the discussion items is co-curricular and athletics update.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, let you know that the NHIAA, I don't know if it was a week ago, it's been very recently made up a change. Until now, basketball has been categorized as a high-risk sport, and they've just moved it to being a moderate-risk sport. They have not provided the, you know, any guidelines or anything like that around how basketball might work at, at the state level yet, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we'll be looking to see what that might entail and certainly have a conversation about, is it, is it feasible and safe to offer that this winter? Also, for swimmers, we're not able to swim over UNH, and so it is a lower-risk sport, but we have to have a facility to use, and Houston is actively trying to find a location for swimming, so that's, that's kind of on hold a little bit right now. And then the third winter sport is track, and all of the tracks in the area are in colleges and universities, and so that, according to Mr. Hayes, is, is not likely at all that we'll be able to offer that. Also, cheerleading, I guess, is a very, is still considered a high risk. Not sure how cheerleading is and basketball isn't, but I don't really understand how they, they think these things through when both have close contact indoors, but, but nonetheless, it is high risk, so cheering would not be something we, at least at this moment, would be considering. And just thought I'd give you an update on that as the winter season approaches.
Susan, do you, do you know how the, or why the NHIAA switched basketball from, from high down to middle? You know, what their rationale was?
I guess. My understanding, it was based on the national, and I don't know what the acronym is for them, but there's a Athletic Association, National Athletic Association, and whatever the official name is, I'm not, I'm not clear, but they categorized it as moderate, and so I think that they're just following suit, but beyond that, I don't know. And Jamie didn't have any additional details that he could share with me, even.
That doesn't even make sense to me, because the National Soccer Federation categorized soccer as moderate, and, I mean, yeah, they, no, moderate? No, they said people didn't have to wear masks during practice and games, but yet the NHIAA was saying something different effort. I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm just having, I, I can't believe they changed it to moderate, and when it's going indoors opposed to, it just changes it. The risk's so high to me.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a good understanding of it either, and, but Jamie did say in his conversations with ADs in the area, if anybody plays anything indoors, they're all wearing masks. So I was really surprised to hear from La Branche that youth sports would be indoors, not masking.
No, no, he said, he said they're going to wear masks.
In our, in our school, but not, not in the rim.
Oh, oh, oh.
Not at the public, or privately-owned facility.
Yeah, yeah, no. I witnessed it firsthand at the rim attending a friend's son's game. They, nobody was wearing masks.
Yeah, I, I, I don't understand it myself, but we promised the community and our teachers and everyone this summer, if we opened our schools, that we would, we would stick to the highest standards of safety, and that will be our best chance of being able to stay open the longest timeframes possible during the year. And we committed to our staff, we signed MOAs, we committed to our families, we committed to the students. I mean, we all remember the data that came back from students saying how afraid they were that people wouldn't follow the protocols. And so I, I think that, you know, we have a, we made a commitment, and we stayed with those commitments we made, because other people made decisions based on that. So I, I don't know.
So Susan, just, just for everyone's understanding in terms of, you know, sort of final decisions on which, which sports may go here in Newmarket for the winter, that will be channeled, you know, up through the committees and then through the relevant committees and then through the steering committee? Is that the understanding? And then, you know, ultimately to the board?
Well, we have guidelines that were approved.
Yep.
And we had town meetings over this, you know, way before we approved any of this. So we have guidelines in place that you, that you approved, and everybody agreed to. What I, what I'll ask Jamie, once we see what the lay of the land is from NHIAA, is that we'll, we'll compare what they're saying and see if we can find a way to implement the guidelines that were already approved and offer whatever sports we can. And so if, if there, if, if we can't, and there needs to be like a modification, then, then, yeah, it would go through that process, but the guidelines have already been approved, and it would be only if there's some kind of mitigating factor or something that wasn't taken into consideration when they're put together, that, that then it would go through that process you described.
I got you. So you may not know this, Susan, but when, when is, when is Jamie hopeful to have sort of a, of a decision on that regard, in that regard? Just so people know, because we're creeping up, I think basketball usually starts in mid-November.
They delayed it.
Okay.
So NHIAA delayed any starting of winter sports until December. In December, he said, and games wouldn't happen until January. I recall him saying.
So there's a little time. Okay.
Yeah.
And I think Susan, I think he said on Tuesday as well that he's still waiting for the guidelines from them.
He is, and so the next step is, and he said maybe, maybe he would have something from them next week or the week after that we, that he could take a look at, and certainly, you know, we'll review it with them once he says, okay, yes, you know, the guidelines can be adhered to for basketball, or no, they can't. And if our safety protocols can't be adhered to, then I guess the second thing I would ask Jamie is, is there, is there, what, in what ways can they not be offered safely? And, and then we would, you know, know whether, whether it's something that's even worth entertaining or not. Another piece too on the indoor is the sanitation piece, and that has me concerned too. Unlike sports outside, you don't have to sterilize the grass. And all, you know, yes, you do the balls, and yes, you do, you know, any equipment that you have, but being short three custodians, we've already outsourced a portion of our custodial force, just because we haven't been able to hire those folks. I don't know how we would add on to our fragile little team, the responsibility of, you know, keeping everything in the gymnasium, which we don't have to attend to now, cleaned up and sterilized and, and all of that several times a day, because you can't have girls playing with the boys. I mean, you keep them separate, so I, I just don't, I, I don't know. But Jamie's very, very, his, his last plan for soccer, I have to say, we were not considering soccer at all at the beginning of the year, and, you know, he was able to come up with a plan that, that all parties felt was safe, so, you know, hats off to him, and let's see what he can do.
I think it's kind of an important point, too, that, yeah, we established guidelines, which I guess I'm confused where, where guideline ends and policy begins, but perhaps that's a different discussion. But the guidelines were based on our knowledge at that time. As our knowledge of the disease or the virus change, we certainly may change our guidelines.
Absolutely. And right now, and that's what I tried to explain earlier this week, is that they, they have changed. Things have gotten dramatically worse than they were at the time when the guidelines were put into place, so, but yeah, I mean.
Well, in some senses, and then in other senses, that, that, how long someone has to be in contact to be considered, you know, possibly getting the virus is, is, we have more knowledge about that now than we do before.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, it's, it's, everything is, you know, a learning experience, and, you know, as I've said over and over, and we bought masks that said so, you know, because we mean it, you know, that we're all in this together, and, you know?
We'll make modifications, does it make sense?
We have all along, you know? We originally weren't going to have spectators, and then, you know, we got the feedback and we went back and figured out a way to have spectators, so we've made lots of modifications based on feedback and new information, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay. Any further questions or comments right now on that calendar issue? Okay?
Oh, that was on sports, was it?
Yeah, on the co-curricular athletics, yeah.
I was going to say, wait a minute, that wasn't calendar-related.
Somebody might have to take over. So next, we have a generous donation from, from Hannaford to the elementary school. Susan, you want to describe that?
Yeah, we have two. It's clear to me why we have two, but we do. So they're, they have, they have a program, Hannaford says, it's Health Schools Program, and, and based on participation in the program, we accumulate a certain amount of money that they then donate back to the schools. So there's a check, and like I said, I'm not really sure why there's two.
There's a comment at the top. It, it says there's, basically the 2019 was delayed due to COVID. It's at the top of the, yeah. And then the other one's 2020, presumably, yeah.
Gotcha. I, I was reading and thinking, I'm not seeing the difference, but that's, that's it. So one's the donation from 2019, and the second one is for 2020. So this, and this is for the elementary school, so we are so pleased to.
Does anyone know how this program works?
And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, to be honest with you.
I think there's a thing where you can put your receipts in for specific schools, and that's what generates these funds. Like, there's a thing that they have in the front of the store with the school's names on it, you can put your receipts in.
Because we should really publicize that.
I didn't even realize that.
I didn't either, yeah.
So how, how does it, what do you put, so?
I think you put in, like, the receiving thing with the school name on it.
As you, as you're shopping, you just?
As you're, after, as you're leaving the store.
Okay.
And then I think from something, some percentage of that purchase comes from this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That makes sense.
But I have never even, there, but obviously it was, because we got some money.
Well, I assume this, I guess we just know which Hannaford this is, I guess.
I would say I'm probably at center.
But it could also, yeah. Because it's the other one, the Durham.
It could be any of them. We should find out.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
We'll learn more and get back to you.
Great. So while we're at it, could I seek a motion to accept those generous donations from Hannaford?
So moved.
In the amount of $2,100, $2,019, $2,019, and another check in the amount of $1,600?
So moved.
I'll second it.
And all those in.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
I just want to make a note, I guess Amazon's similar to this, where you pick, you can put your school in it after you make a purchase.
I think we spent about a million dollars on Amazon this year, so.
Yeah, right.
That's unfortunate. Wish it hadn't happened sooner.
I'll have to change mine, I'm going to a hospital now.
Right. All right, so that's the end of our discussion items. Let's go down to action items. We have a manifest to approve. Kim, did you make a?
We accept the total of all manifests of $1,018,004 cents.
Second.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're going to, again, push off the goals for next meeting, along with the calendar revisions. We've already done the donations. May I seek a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA, I, Roman II, small a, and C?
So moved.
By roll call vote, Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Right.
Ms. Tilden? Unanimous, so we're in non-public at 6:45. Ms. Tilton, unanimous. So we're in non-public at 6:45.
Because my daughter doesn't see me now. Okay. No, well, we're picking them up. Yes. That's what she said, so she was right. Okay, so that's what we'll do.